Nice tag. I know. Nothing. I was just apologizing for that.
Oh, that's so funny.
My way. Oh, my God.
Debbie, I got 16 emails after the last meeting of people telling me they can't hear you. Let me.
Like that?
Test.
Can you all hear me?
Okay.
Thank you, Virginia. So on top of things, Virginia.
Do you know who that is over there?
Okay.
In the past, we always had.
Each and each time.
Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of Marshville Borough Council September 17, 2018. If you'll please rise for a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance will begin.
If you look at B, I think we do put a number.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please, Virginia?
Here we go.
Here. Here.
Here.
Councilwoman Larrington?
Here.
Here.
Councilwoman Day?
Here.
Councilwoman Barker?
Here.
Councilwoman Smith?
Here.
So. Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay. There is no announcement or presentation. The budget discussion was done. I'm sorry?
Actually, could I make a?
Oh, sure, okay.
An announcement or two?
Sure.
Just a reminder for mayor and council, there will be an executive session with council on October 15 at 6:00 PM in the caucus room.
For the purpose of?
Contract negotiations. And that was it.
That was it. Okay. The 2019 budget discussion was done at the agenda meeting, so we're going to move on to public comment. Jane Berger, another three-minute timer, please.
Okay. There's a problem with trash pickup today. I'm just confirming that there was possibly a problem with the trucks, so at some point you can explain why several streets did not have their trash picked up. I'm aware of North Pennsylvania Avenue and West Maple Avenue, so I'll be looking forward to seeing them tomorrow. On the agenda for tonight, I think there were some other items that you took care of on Tuesday?
Yes.
Would be 9A.
Mm-hmm.
I guess there's others.
Yeah, G and H will not be voted on tonight. They were already voted at the agenda meeting and passed.
I just want to clarify that. So G is off and H is off. Okay. 9B, I know you've been working on the emergency operations plan, and as I understand from the agenda meeting on Tuesday, that was the first council actually received a copy, made aware of the existing plan, so I'm not sure if you had gotten any kind of a summary that showed the plan under review, what the changes were, additions, deletions, modifications from the original plan. It was put in in 2003, and I believe every two years it was looked at and word came to council from whatever committee in the former emergency management coordinator that were no need for changes, so look to it very, I guess, carefully and make sure it gets a thorough review before you do put it into place. If anybody wants a historical perspective, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll close public comment. At this time, we'll do approval of the minutes. 6A is regular Borough Council meeting minutes of Monday, July 16, 2018. Can I have a motion, please?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion?
Hope I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, she's going to abstain. Okay. Okay, then can I have a roll call on it, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drayson?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Larrington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mars?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes six and one abstention. Okay, next is Finance. 7A, Treasury Report. Everyone receives in their pocket the financial statement. If anyone looked at it, had any questions, this would be your time to say something. You guys okay? Okay, next is 7B. Call for motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills. Can I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
One page, sorry about that. Two of GL 1808, there's another Rudolph Clark invoice for $80. Is every time the right-to-know comes in, is it going straight to them when it deals with the police department, so we're going to see a bill?
No, no, only when it pertains to a civil service matter, which that one did.
This was more civil service?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Councilwoman Larrington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Yager?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Can I just clarify something on that?
Sure. I'm sorry, seven-zero.
Just to clarify, Councilwoman Larrington, that isn't for the Civil Service Commission's solicitor to respond to a right-to-know request, because we do that. That's for us to get information from the Civil Service Commission that pertains to their business so that we can prepare a response. Or else the amount of their solicitor would be charging us would be substantially more than, I think it was, what, 80 bucks? So.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to reports. We have a mayor's report.
Yes, good evening. Nationally, the month of September is recognized as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month as a way of promoting resources available on that subject. People may not realize that each year more than 41,000 people in the U.S. die by suicide, or that suicide is the second-leading cause of deaths among people aged 10 to 24. Every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need an occasional reminder that we are silently fighting our own battles. I would encourage all of our residents to take time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, neighbors, and to genuinely convey to them their appreciation for their existence by any gesture that they feel that's appropriate. A simple phone call, a message, a handshake, a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Locally, there are several suicide prevention resources, but three that are right here at the top of my list are PreventSuicidePA.org, Bucks County Suicide Prevention Task Force, Family Service Association of Bucks County. Also, I'd like to give the suicide prevention lifeline phone number, which is 1-800-273-TALK or 8255. Although August and September brought quite a bit of rain, thankfully Labor Day was sunny, although it was extremely hot, and I want to thank everyone who left their air conditioning to either volunteer or attend the picnic. Also want to thank the borough itself for keeping the tradition alive. I think it's been close to 60 years now that that picnic has been going on. I'd like to mention a few thank yous, and of course, whenever I do thank yous, I feel bad because there's always people that seem to get left off the list, and it's never intentional. But the Delaware Valley Road Runners Car Club, they gave up their holiday to participate once again, even gave a few raffle prizes. They did provide a very nice show, had a lot of extremely nice vehicles showed up. Scott Robinson, who generously volunteered, not just his services, but a lot goes with that because Scott had to bring his equipment to set up and break down time. Morrisville's Giant was very generous. They donated to zucchinis and the watermelons. In case you missed the Zucchini 500 or the watermelon eating contest, on a silly side note, it's always the little girls that seem to win the watermelon contest. It's always the skinny little ones. We have a little fun with that. The Dollar Tree and Anthony's Pizza donated some prizes for those contests, actually. There's a new owner of Morrisville's Edible Arrangements. They donated items for the grab bags, which was, I think, a free smoothie, which was very generous. Of course, Troop Three came through with the opening and closing ceremonies, and there was quite a few local people who volunteered their time. Cello was part of the Aztec dancing group. Cello lives in the borough. Suzanne, who is the owner of the Italian Bee, and she was there. Eli the Hawk. The Zumba instructor is Betsy Bailey. Of course, the Morrisville School District's cheerleaders are just to name a few. And of course, I want to thank Donna Wilson, Ted Parker, Wanda, Nancy Sherlock, Corinne, and last but not least, my family, my wife Janet, Michael and Amanda, for all the help they did. And lastly, I'd like to remind people that in September, school's back in session, so please be on the lookout as you're making your way through town. I think most people realize we're a walking district, so be careful of the students walking. Be courteous, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Vell. Okay, we're going to go on to our action items. 9A, we won't be voting on. It was already approved by the council at the agenda meeting on September 11. So we'll move on to 9B. Call for motion to approve the emergency operations plan. Can I have a motion? Okay. If I could say something about this motion before we actually, I asked for that again. I've had several phone calls from a couple of the council, back and forth, asking me questions and how I felt, and since I gave them this information at the agenda meeting on what we did have in place years ago, which was the Borough Emergency Management Team members as part of that. I think since there's some of the council that just needs to have some questions answered, I'm going to ask you guys if you want to take this to October, and at the agenda meeting, the emergency management coordinator, if he has the time on that Tuesday, could come and answer those questions for you, or if, I'm sorry? Yeah, well, I'm just, whatever the title was for this, as we understand it, is the chief also. So that you can get your questions answered. I think that's where the thing is. I've got people calling back and forth going, well, you know, I feel about this, or, you know, what about this? And I'm like, well, then we need to have those questions answered to make it, you know, a consensus that you guys are ready to vote for this. So it's up to you if you guys want to vote this tonight, if you want more time, you want to talk to the chief about this, if it's only a few of you that want to get together as a committee and find out what time he can sit with you and answer your questions on this so that we can finally get this thing voted on. But you guys need to make that decision about that.
I'd prefer to wait and get more further information.
Okay. Anyone else?
I didn't hear what I didn't say.
She said she'd rather wait and get the questions answered.
I would like to have my questions answered as well.
Okay.
I'd prefer to wait, too.
Okay. Would you guys like this removed and have the time in October to figure out a timeframe? Do you want to do it through a smaller committee session so that whoever has these questions can meet and have a face-to-face with the chief? He could set up that time with you to answer those questions? Or you want to just do it at the agenda meeting, and maybe he, I don't know what his schedule is. I don't know whether he can be at the agenda to answer your questions for you, whatever you guys want to do.
What committee would it be, meeting with?
Well, it would.
Ad hoc.
Yeah, yeah, it can just be any that, you know, I can set up for it. Right now, you have in place already on the books the emergency management team members, which was the mayor, council president, council vice president, and a third member was on it, which was the next highest-ranking member of your council. So, like I said, we don't have to stick exactly to that, but if it's just, you know, a few of you that want to get together with him, it's under quorum, you just, I'll let you just do a committee, tell me who wants to meet with him, and just get back to me, and we can contact the chief and let him know if that's what you guys would like to do. I don't know if the whole council has questions, or if it's just a few of you.
I think that's best.
You want to do it that way? And see if that's, we'll contact the mayor and the chief and see if they can find that time, because I think we need a little communication on this. Would that be good?
I'm good with that.
Okay, then I would like you guys, what you need to do is send me a message who would like to, and if it's more than a quorum, we'll set up two different timeframes for you guys to sit down and get your questions answered.
Okay.
Okay? So we're ready to go with this thing. Is that good? Okay.
If I may, Madam President?
Sure.
Just for the public's knowledge, I mean, I see no problem with getting questions answered. That's always a good thing. I just want everyone to realize that I sent that in in July, tried to get it on the July agenda, and I sent it in a little late, so. So this isn't new. The council has had it for a couple of months, not that, I'm not voting on this, but I just want everybody to realize this didn't just pop up overnight.
Right, and to your point, that's true, but I will also like to mention that they also did not get any information on what was previously sitting to have something to compare to. And even though the chief was asked, each time we got an update, what was the change or what did we have on the books? There was nothing ever presented to the council. Now, I saw the plan myself, so a lot of it is boilerplate. It really is. All municipalities have to have a continuity between it, so your emergency response checklist are all very similar, and this is actually mirrored to what was already on the books. The only thing that was changed was the positions, some of them slightly, when it came to the emergency operations plan. But the council themselves, just a couple of questions they were asking me, you know, they just at this point would like to have some of those answered now that they see this, and I think that's only fair. I get it, you know, but the chief's been working on this since March, and I thank him for that. There's a lot put into this, and, you know, testing he's got to do to prepare himself for it. But that's also the council, too, so they're voting on this, and they need to be comfortable with what they're voting on, so I think that's just fair. So can we just officially remove it, or do we have to?
No, we can just skip over this agenda item for now.
All right.
And we can revisit it in October.
Okay.
Do you want council members to get their availability to you?
Or to you, either one.
Either one, okay.
Yeah, to the manager, and that way we can set up, and we have the timeframe between, you know, the mayor, if you'd like, also 10, and the chief, so that you can get your questions answered, because I know.
We'll try to resolve this before the next agenda meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that a little better for everybody? Everybody's comfortable with it? Okay, and then whatever was best for his schedule. Okay, so we will skip over that. Thank you, everyone. 9C. Call for motion to acknowledge receipt of the Minimum Municipal Obligation Forms, MMO, for both the police un-uniformed and non-uniformed pension plans to be submitted to the Pennsylvania municipal retirement system by October 5, 2018, and authorizing the borough manager to execute the necessary documents. Can I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Everyone knows, something we do every year for the pension. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Larrington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mars?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
May I add a comment?
Sure.
Just if I may, you know, quite often we talk about the borough's financial challenges. In terms of our employee pensions, the borough's actually been good stewards of both pension plans to the extent that the non-uniformed employee pension plan is slightly overfunded, and the uniformed plan is almost 100%, not quite. So that's certainly a positive thing. I know we have a tendency to focus on the negative, but I'd like to just mention that this evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to 9D. Call for motion to approve millage payment in the amount of $110,000 to the Morrisville Fire Company as per 2018 fire fund budget contingent upon receipt of payment in full for gas and diesel invoices. Can I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this motion? Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drayson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larrington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mars?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Yager?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. 9E. Call for motion to approve millage payment in the amount of $55,000 to Capitol Health as per the 2018 EMS fund budget. Can I have a motion, please?
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drayson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larrington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mars?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
No.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Yager?
Yes.
Motion passes six-one. Okay, 9F. Call for motion to award the 2018-2019 Consortium Salt Bid as bids for the Bucks County Consortium to Morton Salt Incorporated per their bid price of $47.92 per ton delivered and $47 per price undelivered contract. Can I have a motion, please? I'm sorry, to run to September 30, 2019. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? Everybody got this information? All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drayson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larrington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larrington?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Yager?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. Okay, 9G and 9H, we won't be voting on. They were already passed by the council and approved at our agenda meeting on the 11th of September. We'll move on to 9I. Call for motion to adopt the Employee Policy Manual to become effective December 1, 2018. Can I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Yeah, I guess. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on it?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. Sure. I spoke on this a little bit last week, as I noticed the effective date was so soon, and I'd like to speak on it again, some of the same information and some new information. Earlier this year in January, I did receive a memo from our solicitor, which brought me to one of my favorite sayings about Morrisville, "What's old is new again." And I say that because many times, this issue of, especially when it pertains to police officers working part-time, has been discussed. Even the mayor before me had raised this question and concern. But there's a little difference this time, because with the implementation of the manual, council would actually be doing something to limit the hours to 30. I think everyone knows, because it's been explained many times in council chambers here, that the police department has 10 full-time officers, one chief, six part-time officers. Six part-time officers fill in as needed. I know one of the officers that's part-time was hired back in 2006, and there's been many times he's actually worked 60 hours. So to say that we're just going to ask one or two officers to cut back 10 hours, that's not correct at all. But in fact, just this very weekend, one of the full-time officers called out, and the department could not find any part-timers to replace him. Chief McClay came in and filled in and worked the street. He told me that he didn't want to leave an officer without backup, so, and that's not new. I think we've mentioned before, the chief does fill in. But, and I could tell you from looking at the chief logs, earlier this month, we had two part, I'm sorry, two full-time officers on one shift called out. We were lucky, we were able to replace them with the part-timers. I've said it, and I'll say it again, I believe that this is, if this is implemented, it could jeopardize public safety for the residents and officers, and this isn't hypothetical scenarios, because if the hours are limited, that's going to hurt who's going to be available. I wish, I think we all wish, that the part-timers were sitting home waiting by the phone to jump in and help us, but the reality is they have other jobs. Some work full-time, some work for other departments part-time, so it's very difficult. I know there's been many definitions that were brought up. Last week, I heard the IRS has a definition of what part-time is. In the memo that Mr. Flager gave us, he mentioned, I think it was the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, and something that I thought was interesting last week, that our manager said that the insurance company has an issue with this, which I wasn't familiar with that, but I have these today, if you want to pass them down. Chief McClay was able to get some clarification from the insurance company, from Phil, that his concern is one that's the ACA, the Healthcare Act, when you have 50 employers, which luckily it doesn't apply, and Marshall Borough doesn't have that. So a lot of the concerns basically are reduced to, as Mr. Flager put in his memo, is basically it's up to the employer to see fit how they want to handle part-time. So certainly something that falls under the realm of council, but I just want to reiterate that I believe if you set the limit to 30 hours, it's going to. that I believe if you set the limit to 30 hours, it's going to create more of a problem having officers on the street, because earlier this year, we were told by council, they held up the budget and said, "We're maxed out, we're not getting more part-timers." I don't believe the council ever, at any point, said, "Sure, hire more," so that's my concerns, I just wanted to share. Thank you.
Madam President, may I?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Ravela. So for me, my concern is, we could talk about who's justifying what part-time is, but at the end of the day, I have to say, even in my short time here, and paying attention to what's going on in this borough, I think we've had enough IRS fines. And I think doing things the wrong way, just because it's easier, has gotten us nothing but problems in the past. So although it may not be easy, doing things the right way is important. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Do we have a list, Mayor Ravela, of the part-timers and how many hours they've put in or not put in?
I do not have such a list. I can tell you, it varies, they fill in as needed.
Are there specific ones that continuously turn it down?
I don't call and schedule it. Honestly, I couldn't give you a correct answer.
Well, if that's the case, maybe we should get rid of some and hire new ones.
Actually, council can do that. Council hires and fires the officers.
I mean, if there are some that just don't show up ever, then there's no sense having them on the payroll.
Okay, for me, so the fix for this is, the chief would be hiring more part-time to fill in the hours when this is implemented. Is that correct? Okay.
Could I?
Sure.
May I comment? The question of the part-timers has come up before, and I think we ran a payroll report for a previous meeting. There actually aren't any part-timers that don't do any hours. All of the part-timers work consistently every month, for the most part. It is sporadic, I'll give you that. Somebody raised a question at the last meeting, Mr. Jaeger, it may have been you, I don't recall. I believe after the agenda meeting, I consulted with the police chief, and this would basically adversely affect two of the part-time officers for an average of 15 to 25 hours a week. And an issue we left dangling at the work session that perhaps we could revisit tonight is, if we implement the policy manual with 30-hour-a-week cap, is council receptive, if it becomes a problem manpower-wise for the chief to increase the number of part-timers? Remember, the part-timers aren't sitting around the building waiting to be deployed, they're essentially per diem personnel, so they're like mercenaries, they work when they're needed. So I know this came up at Tuesday night's agenda meeting, but would council be receptive either now or perhaps in the 2019 budget for us to increase the number of part-time police officers, provided that is that the chief's able to recruit more?
Yes.
It's not an easy thing.
It would be.
As long as it would eliminate the problem, yes.
I don't think there would be a problem with that.
I thought the chief had the ability for eight part-time.
Six.
There's six in there, that I know of. Was it six? I thought it was eight.
I thought it was eight.
I don't know, I thought it was six.
Yeah, my last thing was eight.
According to last year's wage data sheet, the chief was allotted eight part-time officers.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think it was eight, yeah.
So if he's allotted eight, but he only has six right now, is that correct, Mayor?
He has six, that I'm sure.
He has six. So for last year's wage data sheet, he has the ability to hire two more part-time officers.
And I'm sure, if this was implemented, if it became a problem where he needed a couple more, he'd just have to come to council and explain that. You know, it's not like we're not trying to keep everything covered, but this is going to be a person, a part of our personnel policy across the board for everybody, every department.
Well, as, Madam President, if I could, as I indicated at Tuesday's agenda meeting, recruiting good part-time police officers is a serious challenge, and the better they are, it's almost a double-edged sword, because you're going to have them for a year or two, and then they're going to be gone, they're going to be with a bigger police department. So it's not an easy task.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a turnover.
Did you want to say something? Okay. Anyone else?
Can the chief still bring on two part-time police officers to fill his allotted eight spots?
Yeah, yeah, it's in there, sure.
Okay. I'm just making sure that, you know, it didn't change, it's still eight.
Yeah.
Catch.
Okay. Okay, we had motion and a second. Okay.
I forgot what the motion and a second was.
Yeah, we did already, yeah.
9I.
Yeah, we're ready. Roll call.
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman LeRusso?
No.
Councilwoman Lyerson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jaeger? Yes.
Motion passes 6-1.
All right, if I may make one more comment, actually, something that the manager touched on, and I actually had the same paperwork in front of me, well, not the same paperwork, but the same information. I don't, still don't know if this would 100% affect the part-time officers, because if you look at definitions, they are per diem officers, because they don't work a scheduled amount of hours, they do fill in, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
That means?
We might want to get clarification from the solicitor, not tonight necessarily, but on whether or not there's a distinguishable difference between part-time and per diem.
Look, I have to see what.
Yeah, we don't want to put you on the spot tonight, but if you could let us know, that'd be great.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to 9J. Call for motion to authorize the, I'm sorry. Are you okay? Okay, I'm sorry, we'll start it again. That's okay. I do it myself.
I already did it, that's why I'm like.
We all make that mistake. 9J. Call for motion to authorize the removal of parking meters and to authorize publication of an ordinance to regulate curbside parking in the business district. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's either Eileen or Danielle, right?
Eileen and Mike.
Eileen and Mike, okay. Okay, any questions or comments on the motion?
Didn't we just have the parking meters fixed?
They're, yeah, they're not working, right?
No, not certified.
Yeah, they're dead horses, I hate to say it, but yeah, they're more a problem than they're worth.
Perhaps they have historic value, I'm not.
Yeah.
Probably not.
Okay, so I know that.
Most of the time, they don't work properly, yeah.
I remember the chief had to drive up to Easton to get the parts to get it fixed.
They're antiquated.
Okay.
They need to be put to rest, those meters.
So we did circulate a draft of this.
Yes.
If you'd like to review it, we'll have it on your agenda. We'll advertise the ordinance for October, and we can discuss it further then, if you like.
Okay, everyone got that, so you can read it. This is just to start the process, okay? Can I have a roll call on it, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman LeRusso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lyerson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, 9K. Call for motion to authorize advertising adoption of preliminary 2019 budget at Borough Council Meeting on October 15, October 15, the public hearing on 2019 budget to be held on November 13, and adoption of final 2019 budget on December 17. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Yep. Motion and a second is, any questions or comments on the motion?
Did we receive a copy of the preliminary 2019 budget?
Sort of. No, that's scheduled for your October 15 meeting.
This is just advertising.
This is just advertising all of the dates.
I understand, I'm just asking if we received a preliminary, preliminary.
Yeah, not yet.
Just want to make sure I did not miss anything.
Yeah, these are just setting the dates for the different times we're going to be passing the stuff to get it in there, so.
We hope to have it available for the October agenda meeting for discussion, and then for approval at your October 15 meeting.
Okay.
Well, just for clarification, I know we had a piece of a preliminary budget given to us, with had an option A and B. Is that going to be included, or are we looking to have changes in basically just regard what we already received? We are modeling the 2019 budget with the status quo option of option A until council directs us otherwise. Thank you, sir.
There is another finance meeting coming up, correct?
Yes.
Yes, there is, okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman LeRusso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lyerson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. 9L. Call for motion to authorize the transfer of $16,999.20 from the general fund to Liquid Fuels Fund based on the 2016-2017 liquid fuels auditing, audit finding. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion?
You could go first.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
When the liquid fuels was audited.
Oh, sorry.
This, I'll round it up, $17,000 was found. Where was this money put in order to have to put it back? So where was it used incorrectly?
Our understanding of what occurred in 2016 and 2017 with the liquid fuels fund was, the borough essentially borrowed funds from the liquid fuels fund for the streetlighting fund, and that funding now has to be replenished.
So another $17,000 that's not budgeted, you should say.
Not budgeted in our '18 operating budget, correct?
That now has to be moved, because it was moved in the first place incorrectly.
Well, actually, that transaction is allowed by liquid fuels, so it's not a technical violation of the law, but it has to be replenished. And our, the liquid fuels audit finding that we are now replenishing is by order of the Pennsylvania Auditor General's office.
So we got our hands slapped.
Well, we're not being fined or penalized, we just have to replenish the funds.
The money is that were used incorrectly.
You could argue that, but, or you could also argue that it should have been budgeted this year, but.
Rob Peter to pay Paul. He's just got to get paid back.
We just have to replenish it. We have, I believe, 60 days to replenish the funds, and we're already like 30 days into it, so.
Put it back up.
It's yet another one of those things that you don't have a lot of control over.
Madam President?
Sure.
Mr. Mitchell, quick question on that. So we have to replenish it, that's fine, we're taking it out of the general fund in next year's budget, is that going to come out of the streetlighting fund and go back into the general fund?
Well, we actually contemplated that transaction now. Unfortunately, the streetlighting fund does not have the sufficient funds to replenish this funding. So the only other source is to take it from the general fund.
Okay, so you don't anticipate having that available in next year's budget to move over, then?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, can we have a roll call on this, please, Virginia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman LeRusso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lyerson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jaeger? Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. 9M. Call for motion to authorize the borough engineer to issue the notice of intent to award contract to the lowest responsible bidder for the Plaza Boulevard and DeLaro Drive Road resurfacing project. The borough has 30 days to determine whether the prospective awardee is qualified under Section 7 of the responsible contract ordinance. This project is contingent upon PennDOT approval for liquid fuels funds. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the motion? We got this in our packet. Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilwoman Dowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman LeRusso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lyerson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jaeger?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Now, at this time, the manager has a couple of motions that we need to add to the agenda tonight, so he's going to read what those motions are.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, council, my apologies, we have a couple of late starters that just came in this afternoon. The first, I believe, was in your folders. It's a letter from the borough engineer regarding the public bidding results, recommendation for Williamson Park playground improvements. As you know, this was our second time out to bid, well, out to solicitation for bids for the installation of the totlot section of the playground improvements at Williamson Park. Unlike last time, where we had zero bidders, we did have one bidder in this instance. Unfortunately, the borough engineer has deemed their bid package to be incomplete and not in accord with the contract bidding requirements. Therefore, it is his recommendation, as well as mine, and I believe the solicitor concurs, that we should reject the bids as submitted and rebid this project. So, do you want me to phrase a motion for you?
Yeah, you want to phrase a motion for it, sure.
I guess you're going to call for a motion to authorize the borough engineer to reject the bid received for the Williamson Park playground improvements due to the bid package being incomplete and not in accordance with the contract bidding requirements.
Okay. Virginia, a chance to get all that?
I believe attached to that letter was the bid tabulation.
It is. Okay. Should I open it for public comment first, before I get a motion and a second? Okay. Would you like to open it for public comment on this motion, if anyone has something?
We just want to do one public comment.
I can do the second one, do it at one time, is that okay? Do you want it the same time? Okay. And the next motion, then, Scott?
The second late starter, and this is a relatively easy one.
Do you want to serve vote on this one?
Let's do this one at a time, because they're not related to each other.
No, they have nothing to do with one another. No, they have nothing to do with one or the other.
Motion is second, then ask for comment.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Now, we can have public comment on it. No. But the council, council have any on this, on this bid being rejected?
You first.
You got all, you got all the paperwork for this, why it was rejected.
Madam President?
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear on this. So it's, it's the Class A apprenticeship program that this company that bid and actually gave a reasonable bid, this is the reason for them not being eligible, correct?
Well, actually, I believe they are in some way, shape, or form. I'll let the solicitor explain the legalities of it. Unfortunately, they didn't include any of that required documentation in their bid package.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe that's outlined in the third paragraph.
There were a number of, it was defective in a number of ways.
Okay.
They just didn't fill out certain things at all.
Okay.
That was one amongst, amongst others, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. What am I doing wrong here? Oh, I see, I got it. I think I got that. I got it. Who knew? Who knew? It's magic. Never mind, I want to have--
Is there anyone else?
I gotta take a course on--
John Lader is making a bloopers reel of this in the media booth.
He's shaking his head in there like, oh, no.
All right, if there's no other comments--
Did our engineer, did our engineer indicate whether he thinks the third time will be a charm? Well, you know, this has been frustrating us for a while, as you know, because the last time we put this out for bid, we received no bids. And I would remind council that we are on a deadline with the county to spend the CDBG money before April. So if you want to move forward with this project, we probably need to rebid it immediately, if not sooner.
But rebid--
Well, that's if they want to do that, I don't--
Rebidding it again is just going to put us at the same spot, because is this Class A apprenticeship program, is this what's halting a lot of bidders coming through?
Would it help?
To do this apprenticeship program, as, you know, the engineer stated?
Well, this is the second time we've bid it, and the second time that that has been the borough engineer's recommendation, if you read paragraph three of his letter.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so this is a bid to reject it, correct?
This is a motion to reject the bid.
I mean, a motion to reject the bid.
Yep. And you need to tell us whether you want us to rebid it, or if you wish to make a policy change before that.
Let's do the motion first.
Okay.
Let's do the motion, sorry. Let's do the motion, let's vote on--
The motion.
Motion, it was commented on.
Okay.
Counsel has a right to act on that if they choose.
Okay.
So the motion is to reject the bid.
Right. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Dowars?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cronicle?
Yes.
Councilman Dowars?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Okay. Want to read the next motion? Do you want to put a separate motion up to wait for the bid?
Discuss this before we do the next one, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's what, council, maybe. So the council, if they have a discussion on that, not for me, but you may end up with the same situation again.
Okay.
As long as that, so council would have to give us direction as to what you think your policy should be.
Do you wish for us to rebid this? Do you wish to make a policy change?
I would think--
What do you want us to do? We don't have a lot of time.
I would do the policy change, as long as that can be as quickly as possible, and then, and then, yeah, for October, it would be plenty of time to do that and then bid it?
Yes. Well, I mean, we'll lose a month doing that, but yes.
Okay.
It seems to make sense, or-- Yeah.
Then we can award the bid at the regular meeting. Can we do that?
Well, we wouldn't--
Lose anything.
Yeah, but they've got to, they've got to do the amendment first before we can rebid it.
All right, so we can do the amendments at the agenda meeting that we're going to need to do, and then do the actual rebid at the actual agenda meeting next month, so it moves a little bit quicker, because we are on a timeframe to get this done. And the second time, we got rejected for the bids, so.
Direct the solicitor to prepare an amendment for the next meeting?
Yes. Okay, want to add another motion, then? Okay.
Sure. Call for a motion to authorize the borough solicitor to prepare an amendment to the responsible contractor ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
You second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on this?
What exactly is the amendment going to be?
So we're just, I believe we're just voting to make an amendment. What that amendment will be, we'll have to vote on in the next meeting when we get the amended draft, right?
See how we can adjust the ordinance to better service?
Just authorizing the, it to be amended. What that amendment is, we have to vote in, in the next meeting, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we can give you a couple of possibilities, and you can vote, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Can I have a roll call?
Councilman Dowars?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cronicle?
No.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilman Yang?
No.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Yang?
Yes.
Motion passes five, seven. I mean, I'm sorry, five, two. Jeez. Okay. P, nine P. We have another one, right?
Yes, may I move on to the second item? The second item, so this would be effectively nine O.
No.
Nine P.
Nine, oh, excuse me, nine P, because you turned one into two.
That's right.
We received notice today from the Auditor General's office that we are going to receive $43,079 in pass-through money from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the Volunteer Fire Relief Association. As most of you probably know, this occurs annually. We have nothing to do and very little say over this. It comes from the state to us, goes through our general fund, and goes to the Volunteer Fire Relief Association. The allocation this year, as I said, is $43,079, slightly down from last year. So we would like council's authorization to go ahead and prepare this payment, because technically, it's supposed to be done within 30 days of our receiving notice.
Okay, so you want the motion to be to authorize?
Yes, this, you would call for a motion to authorize the administration to make payment to the Volunteer Fire Relief Association in the amount of $43,079 in funding received from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This is an annual occurrence.
Okay. Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you like to open up for public comment? No? Okay, anyone up here? All right. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Dowars?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbaum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cronicle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Larison?
Yes.
Councilman Day?
Yes.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
And Councilman Yang?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Anymore?
No other action items.
Okay. I had one comment, but I just wanted to let council know, a couple months ago, in the borough news, it's a magazine that we get, and also, we get the Pennsylvania township news, because we represent both townships and boroughs, both of them dealt with the EMS organization problem and the ambulance services. This one's titled 911, anybody wants to see it, but all over the state, everybody's having the same problems that you've had and experienced, and that Bristol has had, and all the other municipalities. I know misery, misery loves company, and so there's a lot of company in your misery. But part of the problem is, there's just not enough money going into it, and which we've seen that, along with mismanagement and a few other things. But, so, if anyone wants to see it, I have it here. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, no unfinished business, no new business, borough officials. Anyone have anything?
I just had a couple of quick things. September is still the TLT awareness for the ovarian cancer awareness. I think everybody's probably seen all of the TLT bows hung around town. I just wanted to thank Nancy Sherlock for hanging those up, and I'm pretty sure we probably still have bows at the borough. If anybody would like them, they can certainly hang them on their, in their, on their homes. The TLT is hosting their first annual Drag Queen Bingo at the Marsville Senior Center. That will be November 10th from 7:00 to 10:00. That will be $35 a ticket, and if anybody has any questions, they can feel free to reach out to me. We are also getting to that time of year with Halloween parties and kids' events at the library. I believe the library Halloween party is October 25th, and they're also showing the Halloween Charlie Brown movie. That is totally left my brain. The very next day, October 26th. And Summer Seat is having a paint party fundraiser. I believe it's the last Friday or Saturday of the month, September 29th. If anybody has any questions, they can reach out to them. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam President?
Sure.
I just want to let everybody know, Saturday, October 13th at 8:00 a.m., the Marsville Yardley Area Rotary Club will be having a fundraiser breakfast. It's a pancake breakfast. It is $10 for adults, $5 for children, and it is being held at the Marsville United Methodist Church. The money raised from, from events like this go to fund their local educational programs, and it's a very good cause. They do a lot of work with Marsville School District, and they really want to do more. So come attend, help them out, and help them raise that money. Thank you.
What was that date again? I'm sorry.
October 13th.
Thank you.
8:00 a.m.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, then the borough manager would like to have a moment?
Yes, Madam President, and council members, if I could briefly, the fire chief had sent over some documents recently pertaining to property tax rebates for volunteer recruitment and retention. That was included in your Friday delivery. Matt will be attending a future meeting to discuss this with council, to see if council is interested in implementing such a program here under the state law that was adopted a couple years ago, which was included in, in Friday's delivery. That's item one. Item two is, in your packet, in your deliveries this Friday coming up, you're going to see a copy of an ordinance from Lower Makefield Township that they adopted recently regulating short-term lodging facilities. I've discussed this with the zoning officer, as well as the borough solicitor, and we're recommending similar action be taken here in Marsville Borough. So I wanted to provide you with a sample of a recently enacted ordinance governing that issue from a neighboring municipality. So that's going to be in your delivery this Friday. Hopefully, we can discuss this issue at a future agenda meeting.
Okay. I think that's something we could use. Thank you, anyone else?
Yes, I have one thing I'd like to mention. On Saturday, September 22nd at 9:00 a.m., there will be a Marsville River Walk. It is--
River Walk cleanup, right?
River Walk cleanup, yes. All volunteers, they get a free t-shirt. They, starts at 9:00 a.m. So what they're going to be doing is, they're going to walk the levee, and they're going to be picking up litter throughout the borough, down at the park. They're asking for volunteers. If you would like to volunteer, just show up. They'll be at the pavilion. They're going to start at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 22nd. So if anybody would like to join them, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero. Good night, everyone.
Yeah, but he asked me about under an hour and a half.